Board, we now come to order, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyers, Alderman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortman, Alderman Varmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Honowitz, Alderman Murphy, Alderman Howard, Alderman Green, Alderman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vaccaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Coan, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, President Reed, Alderman Tyers, Alderman Hubbard, Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Howard, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Davis, Alderman Carter, Alderman Cruzen, 23 present.
A quorum being present, we will be led today in prayer by Pastor Kathleen Wilder of Lafayette Park United Methodist Church, which is truly a church with walls.
Good morning, let us pray. Most holy God, we give you thanks for this moment in time. And God, we give you thanks for the people who have said yes to serve your city with peace and justice and righteousness for all. God, we lift up James Webb and his family as his passing, we celebrate Lyda's birthday today. And God, we pray that your spirit falls upon us and upon our city, that we might be known as a city of shalom, a city of peace, a city of wholeness, a city that makes you dance with joy. Work in this body of people, oh God, that we might have clarity of mind and knowledge to protect those who have no one to protect them, to keep those who are sleeping outside alive this winter, to work within our community that we might be known as the city of justice and peace. We pray, oh God, that everything we do brings honoring forth to you. In your name we pray, amen. James Webb was an amazing man, and he was the head of the St. Louis Minority Business Council, and he just died recently. We would like to take a moment of silence in remembrance and respect and honor of his life. Please join me in that moment of silence. For the many ways you blessed our city through the life of James Webb, we give you thanks.
It's always nice when Pastor Wilder comes and visits us. Let's give her a round of applause and thanks for her time. Been dedicating a lot of time to the bridge lately, which is helping people all throughout our region. We'll spin with our regular order of business, take up our courtesy resolution calendar, move for adoption our courtesy resolution calendar, entertain a second, second about Alderman from the 22nd, Alderman from the 3rd, he'd like to approach the dais. While the Alderman from the 3rd makes his way to the dais, let's, let's give the Alderman from the 28th a round of applause on her birthday today, and if you get a chance, get a chance, tell her happy birthday today, happy birthday Alderman.
Mr. President, and members of the board, can we ask Mr. James Wilks to come up, please? Well, Mr. Wilks is one of the oldest residents in the Linda Park neighborhood. Where he just had to be helped to come up the steps, he used to run all of the panhandlers and bag guys out of the Linda Park neighborhood, he ran it from Grand down to Glasgow, and from Natural Bridge over to St. Louis Avenue. And everybody in that neighborhood knew Mr. Wilks, because he helped make that neighborhood what it is today, one of the lowest crime areas in all of North St. Louis. And he used to get out there and he'd confront them head-on, and we certainly appreciate Mr. Wilks. Could we have the clerk to read this resolution? It's only a piece of paper there, Mr. Wilks, but what it means is that the members of the Board of Aldermen recognize what it is that you did, making St. Louis, and particularly all in North St. Louis, the safe environment that it is today, and we certainly appreciate it. The only thing wrong with that, we didn't have a Mr. Wilks in every block in North St. Louis.
Well, I thank you. Well, I don't have my glasses, I can't read it either.
Whereas Mr. Wilks commended for his contributions and leadership on this board, was subsequently reappointed by the Mayor Harmon and Slay, including the Board Chair, overseeing some 800 manufacturing businesses for accuracy, growth, problems, and stability. And whereas in 2013, some 60 years after the war ended, Wilks was one of three servicemen in St. Louis recognized with the Congressional Gold Medal, congratulations on that, one of the nation's highest honors for defending freedom around the world in World War II, while also fighting for racial equality and full citizenship here in the United States. And whereas now, we wish to recognize and honor James Wilks' services to the residents and businesses of the city of St. Louis on the occasion of his retirement from the Merchants' and Manufacturing Tax Equalization Board after 21 years. And whereas, we thank the entire Wilks family, especially his wife, Mrs. Dolores Wilks, let's give her a round of applause, and eight children, but also in later years, his 23 grandchildren, 16 great-grandchildren, and two great-great-grandchildren for supporting James and his services to the community of the city of St. Louis. Now therefore, be resolved by the Board of Aldermen that we pause in our deliberations to congratulate and thanks Mr. Wilks for his many years of service. On behalf of the residents of the city of St. Louis, we further direct the Board to spread a copy of this resolution across the minutes of these proceedings, and to the end, prepare a commemorative copy to be given to the honoree at a time and place deemed appropriate by its sponsor, introduced on the 14th day of November 2014 by the Honorable Freeman Bosley Senior, Alderman of the 3rd Ward.
Thank you, Mr. President, I should have brought my glasses, but I didn't. I don't like to wear those glasses, but I didn't this time. But anyway, Mr. Wilks has been a kind of a floor, a bottom, a support area for that whole Linda Park neighborhood. He formed the block units from St. Louis Avenue all the way back to Natural Bridge, and whenever anything was going on in that area, Mr. Wilks was on top of it, and he certainly brought some, how would I say, some peace and stability to that neighborhood. See, he was one of the first people of African-American descent to move into that neighborhood. That's when they had that YMCA, not the YMCA, Sportsman's Park up on Grand Avenue. And Mr. Wilks bought a house in there, and there were protests against African-Americans living in that neighborhood. And Mr. Wilks really, really visited each and every one that moved into that neighborhood and made sure that they understood what was expected of him. He was responsible for putting together the Linda Park Neighborhood Association, and has done a tremendous job over in that area. And I just want to say, thank you, Mr. Wilks, because there are so many people in the Linda Park neighborhood benefited as a result of, well, your leadership and your being up there. So this resolution is paper, but when you hang it on the wall at your house or wherever you want to hang it, it says, everybody who looks at it, a hundred years from now, the name Mr. Wilks will be in the archives of this city for the contribution that he made to the city of St. Louis and Linda Park for the next, I guess I'll be here another hundred years, I intend to be, but nevertheless, it'll be on that wall and be in the archives of this city forever. Mr. Wilks, would you like to just say a word to?
I'm sorry, but today I'm short of words. I was surprised when I was told about this affair. And believe it or not, I never thought that I earned any such thing equal to this. All I can say is, thank you, everybody that I had contact with. Thank God and everybody else for allowing me to be a part of your world. What I did, I did without expecting any rewards, I only did what I thought was necessary.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 23rd.
At the time, I'd like to ask that we do it in bank, if it's not already in bank?
It's been moved by Alderman from the 23rd, second about Alderman from 6th, that we make resolution for Mr. Wilks in bank. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please prepare another copy of the resolution in bank.
So noted.
Now, Mr. Wilks, just so you know, oh, there he is, Mr. Wilks ready to roll. Mr. Wilks, just so you know, what that, what that means is that the Aldermen have chosen to all, all of them have their name added to this resolution. And I've been here for a lot of years, and I'm going to tell you, it's very rare that a person comes and they get a standing ovation from everyone uniformly, so that, that tells you something, and we really appreciate your, your service throughout the years, and, you know, you have added so much to the fabric of this city. And it's been an honor to get to know you and your wife and family. Any further discussion, any further discussion? It's been moved in second that we adopt our courtesy resolution calendar, all in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. With that, we return to our regular order of business, introduction of our guests, any introduction of our guests. Alderman from the 15th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I'd like to introduce Megan Khan, she is a current CORO fellow who is shadowing me today.
Megan, Megan.
Alderman from the 11th.
Thank you, Mr. President, good morning. Mr. President, in the upper gallery today, we have visiting with us the 4th grade class from the New City School, and miss that group of 45-plus young men and women. This morning, we elected a committee chairman and a president of the Board of Aldermen, and in a mock legislative hearing, we, on behalf of the Alderman from the 6th, we outlawed plastic bags seven to nothing. It went extremely well, I'd like to thank Mary, Carla, and Denise for bringing the group down, and we certainly hope that they get some keen insights into City Hall. Mr. President, I also like to announce some special guests. In that group is my nephew Mark, who's in the 4th grade, to my right is my nephew Paul, and then their dad and mom, Laura is over here to my right, that's my nephew Matt's wife, and then the, my predecessor is Alderman from the 11th Ward for 14 years, and thank God, he did leave me a few problems, my nephew Matt Villa. Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Alderman from the 20th.
Members of the board, it's our distinct pleasure this morning to have as our guest the Deputy Treasurer from the, our Deputy Chief of Staff in the Treasurer's Office, Leonard Johnson, and with him, CORO is again well-represented, because Marina Valeria from CORO is also with him today from the Treasurer's Office.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the 22nd.
Good morning, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I have two honored guests and a special guest for me this morning. As always, my honored guest is Mr. Chris Pickle and Leroy Grant with AT&amp;T, and I have a special guest, Mr. Will Kruger, who's a student at Washington University, who is serving with an intern, as an intern with me this semester, doing a lot of great work, walking up and down Monmouth King Boulevard, sharing some stories and learning about our neighborhood, and we're going to try to put together nice news that'll let people know how great the 22nd Ward is. Thank you.
Alderman from the 26th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to announce as my special guest today, the former Comptolo Vervis Jones and a resident of the 26th Ward. Thank you.
Alderman from the 14th.
I'd like to announce my special guest today, Jeff Hake from the Carpeters District Council, Maureen McDonald from the St. Louis Realtors, Gary Otten, Painter's District Number 58, Demetrius L. Alfred, Firefighters Local 73, that is housed in the beautiful 14th Ward in the shadow of the Bevo Mill, and Senator Harry Kennedy, Committeeman of the 14th Ward.
Alderman from the 9th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my honored guest today, Ronnie Hour.
Alderman from the 8th.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my honored guest, a longtime resident of the Shaw neighborhood, Mrs. Diana Lueskovic.
Alderman from the 6th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my special guest, Rachel Smith from the Circuit Attorney's Office.
Alderman from the 23rd, you get the last word.
No, I thought you, you thought you.
Yeah, yeah, one second to the last.
Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to have as my honored guest today, Percy Green III from FIRE.
Welcome, Percy. Maybe third to the last, Alderman from the 16th.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I would like to have as my special guests today, Gina Hackenworth with LaCleed, Anthony Lencia with AGC, and David Holmes with Palmer's and Puff Fitters.
Any further announcements, any further? Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I'd like to welcome as our special guest here today, Mr. John Chasenoff, and the numbers of others who are here with the, with Cabcar in support of civilian review and local control. I'd like them to be my special guests here today, they're in the gallery.
Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from the 10th, like to wrap this up?
Well, you have a stare-down, what is this?
Alderman from 20th, I think it's Megan, Alderman from 20th?
Oh, that's okay, that's all right, I thought maybe it was a stare-down. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I thought maybe he wanted his ward back again, his number. As we gather here on, what is today, November the 14th, it was on this day in 1851 that we first read the words, "They Call Me Ishmael." Anybody remember what this is from? There we go, thank you Shane. Moby Dick, The Quest for Man's Eternal Search in the Hunt for His Destiny, otherwise known as Joe Vaccaro on the Way to Steak and Shake, thank you.
All right. Alderman from the 17th, you recognize, on approval of minutes.
I don't know how to follow up that. Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes of the October 31st meeting.
Who, Alderman from the, from the 17th, entertain a second on that motion? Second about Alderman from 12th, in discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in Sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Alderman's mailboxes.
With dispensal line items, line item 7, would anyone like to take any bills off of any of our informal calendars? Would anyone take, take any bills or resolutions off any of our informal calendars? Dispensal line items 8 through 10, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 191, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Street Commissioner to take all necessary actions to honorarily designate Walton Avenue as Reverend Melvin Smotherson Avenue. Board Bill 192, sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, and ordinance recommended by the planning commissioner changes zoning of property from F Neighborhood Commercial District to see multiple family dwelling districts with property on arsenal and containing emergency clause. Board Bill 193, sponsored by Alderman Williamson, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Street Commissioner to take all necessary actions to honorarily designate Goodfellow between Inright and Delmar as Reverend Tommy C. Wingo Boulevard. Board Bill 194, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Investment and Apportement authorizing the execution of a third amendment to the redevelopment agreement between the city and St. Louis Innovation District, establishing the SSTIF account of St. Louis Innovation District Special Allocation Fund, authorizing and directing the mayor, and the Comptol to execute and deliver a second supplemental trust indenture of financing agreement, a tax compliance agreement, and a continuing disclosure agreement superseding provisions of prior ordinances of the city and containing a severability clause. Board Bill 195, sponsored by Alderman Young and Alderman Varmer, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Investment and Apportement of the city of St. Louis, authorizing and directing the St. Louis Municipal Finance Corporation to issue and sell its leasehold revenue refunding bonds in order to refund all or apportion of its outstanding refunded bonds and its leasehold revenue improvement bonds to fund the construction, repair, improvement, and renovation of Servantes Convention Center in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $25 million and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 196, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt, and ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Investment and Apportement, authorizing the mayor of the city of St. Louis to apply for funding under the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, the HUD Office of Healthy Homes and Lead Hazard Control being offered pursuant to a federal fiscal year 2014 Notice of Funding Availability for the Lead Hazard Reduction Demonstration Grant Program, authorizing the mayor and the Comptol to enter into and execute agreements with HUD for the receipt of, receipt of fiscal year 2014, HUD Lead Hazard Reduction Demonstration, appropriating the sum of a maximum federal obligation of $2,500,000 awarded through, through the LHRD Grant Program and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 197, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Investment and Apportement authorizing the city to establish green community program for the purpose of making low-interest loans for residential energy, energy efficiency projects and public building energy conservation projects, and to issue and sell in one or more series its qualified energy conservation bonds, Series 2014, in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $3,900,000, $3,900,000 and containing an emergency clause, that's the extent of our first reading.
Reference to committee.
To the Streets Committee, Board Bill 191 and 193, to the Housing Committee, Board Bills 192 and 194, to the Health and Human Services Committee, Board Bill 196, to the Convention and Tourism Committee, Board Bill 195, and to the Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill 197, that's the extent of reference to committee.
With dispensal line items 13 and 14, perfection consent.
Board Bill 125, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance pertaining to banner permits amending Section 10 of Ordinance 68604 and enacting in lieu thereof a new section pertaining to the same subject matter. Board Bill 160, sponsored by Alderman Young, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service establishing a public works and improvement project for the downtown traffic signal and intersection improvement for Broadway, 7th Street, Chestnut, and Market Streets involving new traffic signal equipment, vehicle detection, and pedestrian upgrades for, upgrades around Keener Plaza and containing a public work emergency clause. Board Bill 167, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey, and ordinance pertaining to parking within the 4,500 block of Gibson Residential Park District and containing definitions, a penalty clause and an emergency clause. Board Bill 169, sponsored by Alderman Conway, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate travel on Shaw between Kings Highway and Vanaventer, a budding city block 4095, and the north, northern, north and south alley, for city block 4095 bounded by Shaw, Vanaventer, and Kings Highway. Board Bill 170, sponsored by Alderman Boyd, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to vacate above surface, surface, and subsurface travel on Hebert from Clara to Blackstone, from Blackstone, Blackstone from Hebert to Ashland, Ashland west of Clara and continuing to Blackstone, East West Alley in city block 6132 bounded by Hebert, Clara, Ashland, and Blackstone, the youth-shaped alley in city block 4360 bounded by Natural Bridge, Clara, Hebert, and Blackstone, and the Terminal Railroad, and the, the youth-shaped alley in city block 5239 bounded by Ashland, Blackstone, Clara, and Greer. Board Bill 171, sponsored by Alderman Villa, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate travel on the 15-foot white east-west alley in city block 3198, beginning at Vulcan and extending eastwardly to the north-south alley bounded by Davis, Raleigh, Morso, and Vulcan, that's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we approve the perfection consent calendar.
Been moved by Alderman from the 17th, second about Alderman from 12th, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Dispensal line items 16 through 19, first reading of resolutions.
Resolution 161, sponsored by Alderman Young, the Board of Aldermen pursuant to Ordinance 67794, the Public Safety Committee does hereby approve the recommendations of the Public Safety Committee for the appropriation of crime prevention program funds for the fiscal year 2015.
Alderman from the 7th, you recognize on first reading, Resolution Number 161.
Thank you, Mr. President, I would like this resolution to be assigned to my Public Safety Committee.
It's been moved by Alderman from the 7th, that we assign Resolution 161 of Public Safety, it's been seconded by Alderman from the 20th, any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please sign Resolution 161 to Public Safety.
So noted, that's the extent of first reading of resolution.
With dispensal line item 22, miscellaneous unfinished business.
We have none.
Any announcements?
Tuesday, Ways and Means Committee meeting at 9:00 a.m. in the Leisure Room, also on Tuesday, Public Safety Committee meeting at 1:00 p.m. in the Kennedy Room, Convention and Tourism meeting 2:00 p.m. in the Kennedy Room, on Wednesday, a housing meeting at 8:30 a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Friday, full board meeting, 10:00 a.m. in the chambers, that's the extent of my announcement.
Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the 8th. Alderman from the 8th.
Mr. President, members of the board, on Tuesday, we'll have a Transportation and Commerce Committee meeting at 10:00 a.m.
Okay, make note of that, Madam.
I will let her know.
Alderman from the 26th.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. We'll be having a, a series of two meetings in the 26th Ward. Wednesday, the 19th, we'll have a meeting starting at 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. That'll be located at the Demetrius Johnson Foundation, located at 724 North Union, that's Union and Enright. And the subject at hand will be about the new development that is taking place in the 5,500 block of Clemmons, which is, the developers are arise, so we welcome the constituents to come out. Then we'll also have a second meeting that Thursday from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m. That will be located at Kip School, and the subject at hand will be the same thing about the new development that I'm very excited about, that we're going to be having in the 5,500 block of Clemmons, so we welcome all the constituents to come out. Thank you.
All right, then. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we excuse the Alderpeople from the 1st and the 19th wards.
Been moved by Alderman from the 17th, second about Alderman from the 25th. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Alderman from the 17th, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we adjourn till next Friday, November the 21st.
Moved by Alderman from the 17th, second about Alderman from the 14th. All in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Stand adjourned.